Okay, alright. We'll um, we'll go ahead and get started with prayer. Let's see. Hey Scott. Are you in position, you can open us up with prayer?
Uh, yeah, I suppose so.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's hard to never cease them, right? Um, dear Lord Jesus, um, Heavenly Father, thank you for your love, your light, your peace, your grace, put on us right now. Um, thank you for filling our mouths with your wisdom and fruit of the Spirit to go with it. And we thank you for uh, your purpose, um, your purpose driven God, your perfect in every way, and where to rest in your perfection, your goodness. And we thank you for uh, blessing everybody in this Bible study and blessing everybody outside of this Bible study. And uh, that they uh, get hungry and thirsty for your word. Thank you, Lord Jesus, for everything by your grace, love, light, wonder, majesty. Whatever is asked of the Father through his son, Jesus, we say thank you, Jesus, for that by grace, love, light, wonder, majesty, in your name, by grace, thank you, Father, amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you for that, um, thank you for that. Alright, um, on tonight, we're going to get back on our lesson in uh, Proverbs of last week. We um, um, had a wonderful um, time with um, our praise and worship. And Pastor um, uh, gave us a lesson. And uh, that was great. It was a good um, kind of a good pose there to um, get that in. And
Amen.
Um, and now we're going to get back into Proverbs. Um, and um, and continue to move forward with, you know, here on the, the book of wisdom. Um, and so as we get started, you know, before we start our lesson of tonight, um, uh, like to give the opportunities, anybody they have something that they want to say or a question they want to ask um, pertaining to our lesson. Um, and if there is someone, you can, you can do that at this time.
Um, brother teacher, I just want to add how um, even, you know, with our prayer service, how it connects with what we've been learning in Proverbs to how to properly worship God, uh, how to take it to um, the matters of our heart, make sure we're in the right place. Um, um, in our relationship with, with God to recognize of um, the word that was received, how attentive we can be. Proverbs just gets us in the point to understand God's surrounding, the, the Holy Spirit when it um, is present. And when we have an opportunity to serve God in that manner, um, I believe we're mature enough now. Um, and, and you know, our growth is still um, happening because there's things in the world to, to get us to test um, where we are in our relationship with God. So with everything going on today, how we can stand um, in, in awe of God and know that uh, we are covered, I think is a true testament to our Proverbs is teaching.
Okay, amen. Alright, anyone else got something they want to add?
Yeah, I think uh, talk about Jesus and uh, how he uh, came in there, came in the world, he came in the world uh, just uh, this is one of us. And uh, but he had extreme character when he walked, walked the earth. And uh, but it wasn't, it wasn't his looks that made the difference. It was his character. And uh, he came in as a, a son of man. And uh, that uh, when he uh, was born, he was born in a manger. And uh, according to a lot of descriptions, uh, he uh, wasn't uh, uh, wasn't anything that we would, would uh, it would draw attention to his looks. It would, it was his character. He expects that out of us. It would be our character that shines and not uh, based on uh, appearance. And uh, I think that gives us all hope that, that we uh, can lean on that, on character. And uh, and he sent a helper to uh, make it easier. And so uh, when it comes to the fruit of the spirit, you know, that's uh, the fruit we're supposed to test. That's uh, love, joy, peace, patience, and uh, self-control. So um, I think uh, I just consider ourselves so blessed that we are in this, I don't know, day and time when uh, we start to see a lot of that uh, sign in us.
Okay. Alright, alright, thank you for that. Anyone else want to add something? Okay, alright, so we, we're gonna go ahead and, and, and move on in the lesson. And um, um, I think on last time, it was verse sixteen that we stopped on. Um, and it says, whoever strays from the path of prudence comes to rest in the company of the dead. Okay, that was the, um, where we stopped. And seventeen is whoever loves pleasure will become poor. Whoever loves wine and oil would never be rich. Okay, um, classes, if someone want to start discussion on, on that? Okay, so
Brother Chris, just to, Brother Chris, just to clarify, that's um, chapter twenty-one, correct?
Oh, yes, yes, Proverbs, chapter twenty-one, sorry.
Okay, that's alright, just want to make sure.
Okay. Okay, alright, so um, when, when we're looking at this, um, is, is um, letting us know, you know, if um, our focus, you know, we're gonna be focusing on um, the thrills, the pleasures, or the, the um, you know, the, the, the enjoyment, or um, you know, those type of things, we're gonna be focusing on it. Then it says, we'll become poor. Because see, um, there are so many, especially today, there's so many things that um, is, is far as when it comes to, let's, let's say, for example, on the entertainment. Um, you know, if we're addicted to the pleasure of entertainment, you know, there's so many things that we can um, get involved in. And you know, and, and then if you notice, it, it takes sports, for example. Um, and look how much the athletes getting paid. So when we see that, um, the money coming from somewhere, and it's coming from the fans. So if you're looking at, you know, your, your um, your, your focus is there, and that's what you're trying to do. Um, you know, to keep uh, then you're gonna become poor. Because that's where you, you, instead of um, planning for the rainy day, you're putting your focus, you're putting your um, your resources. That's where you're putting your resources, your resources in, um, you know, in, in the, the, the pleasures that you're um, you're, you know, um, that you're, you're focused in. And so here, um, you know, the, he's letting us know that if that's what gonna be our focus, you know, it's gonna make us poor. We're gonna become poor. And if we love, it says whoever loved wine and olive oil would never be rich. So in other words, um, it is kind of like you looking at some, you know, from a point of having so, an addiction. And we're focusing everything that we have to satisfy that piece. Satisfy, you know, the, the, um, if, if, you know, wine with alcoholic or whatever it be, then you know, we're um, we're trying to satisfy that need. It's trying to satisfy um, that pleasure. And it is letting us know that it's, you know, because what happens is you, you know, um, these things, um, we get at the point where, oh, you know what? That roller coaster, that was a thrill. That was great. Now, I need to get on a greater one. I need to get on one that's even better. Because you know, ride the same one again is not the same feeling. Um, so, and so what happens is, i- i- it's gotta get greater. It gotta get greater. So when we look at this and, and I see it from a point of, if you get yourself caught up on the addictions to please the flesh, you know, then what's gonna happen is, is gonna make you poor. So, you know, even when we think about people that get um, um, you know, drug addictions, you know, they're trying to get that, 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 that high of drug addictions. And then we see what happens in, from that standpoint. They um, they a lot of times, they lose everything. Um, and so here, you know, as we gain wisdom, we gotta understand the pleasures, especially the pleasures of the flesh, is not the important thing. It's not the main thing. Okay, so we have to learn, um, we have to learn uh, about sacrifice. Okay, so when we talk about satisfying pleasure, there's a, there's, there is total opposite of sacrifice. When we sacrifice, that mean we're um, those things that we, we think that we won't, or we think that we have to have, we're proving to our flesh that we can live without it. Okay? Um, Scott?
Uh, yeah, I like, I like what you just said, and uh, that really registers with me. And uh, and it's real easy to get caught in this or that and uh, and lose yourself. And some, like in video games or whatever, uh, would, you know, hey, I'll just play one game or something like that, or whatever. And then before you know it, it's becomes such an obsession that you don't pay the bills on time, or you don't uh, go to work, or you don't do this or that. And uh, it becomes uh, an idol. It, it becomes something that uh, takes your focus away from where God wants you. Takes your focus away from seeing it from his perspective, the big picture. And uh, and I, and I completely agree about the roller coaster. And uh, and when I lived in the Keys, you know, I, I couldn't have enough coconut, you know? And, and uh, so I just love coconut. And, and you, and after a while, you can't stand coconut after that, right? It's like, um, those, those, the pleasures are meant to be uh, gifts. The pleasures are meant to be uh, you know, when you have dessert, when you have ice cream, you know, too much of anything isn't good for you. You can maybe have a couple, you know, um, spoonfuls of ice cream, and you know, that should satisfy your taste and that. But when you go into a whole tub, right? Uh, you, you, you lose the pleasure, you lose what, what God intended to make something that uh, is like a status, something to satisfy yourself. And satisfy you for that time being anyway. But uh, the big picture is really what we all should be looking at, seeing things from God's perspective.
Alright, thank you. Excuse me, thank you. Alright, so um, and seeing what happens there too. And it's, it's, it's gonna kind of, you know, uh, when we get caught up uh, in our selfishness. And that's basically what this i- is, you know, where, where it rolls over into. Because we're trying to make sure, you know, that the things that we enjoy, the things that we love, that, that, you know, we're gonna take care of that, those pleasures of ourselves. But you know, it, it is, is, is a selfishness. And it put us in the same uh, situation as the, the rich young ruler. You see, because what happens is, we're all about me. And it don't matter what happens to anybody else, as long as I get my thrills, it don't matter um, about the next person. Okay, so now what happened is, we're not, we're, we're looking, we're looking tunnel vision. And seeing Christ wanted us to be able to look peripheral vision. So that we could see the things that's going on around us, so that we could see that, you know, someone that's uh, down in the ravine that need us. Okay, and so, you know, um, and then what happens is, we get so caught up in these things that the things start to take over, and the things start to take control. And because it's taken over and it's taking control, then there goes, you know, everything that we have. We're, we're trying to maintain it. We're trying to keep it up. We're trying to keep this going. And so we have to, um, you know, so when we see this, um, it gives us a measuring stick of saying, how am I, how am I when it comes to this? Do I, you know, am I able to, um, you know, there, there are certain things that we like. Am I able to live without this? Am I able to do without this? Or, or, or am I actually addicted to it? You see, so you know, i- is, is Brother Scott uses the example of ice cream. Okay, am I addicted to ice cream? Or, you know, or am I in control of this? And seeing we have to, you know, we have to uh, be honest with ourselves. Because whenever, you know, we be honest with ourselves, it shows us where we are. And you know, we might think there's nothing wrong with eating ice cream. But see, when anything takes control of us and, and have a certain control that we um, put it in front of people, we put it in front of God, then there's a problem. Because God wants to be number one. And, 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 and so, you know, that's the importance of, and, and that's why we fast. So that we could say, okay, I can turn away from the plate, turn the plate away. I can live without this, you know? I, I can, you know, I fast from my phone, from the electronic devices. Okay? So it lets us know that, you know, that we are still in control over these things versus these things are in control of us. Okay, and because when it become uh, in control of us, that's where we're gonna focus all our resources. Okay? Alright, um, and it's uh, um, that was seventeen eighteen says, the wicked becomes a ransom for the righteous and the unfaithful for the upright. Okay, so um, when I see this, 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 this is going in the direction of, you know, the wicked become the ransom for the um, for the righteous. And basically, I see this where, you know, um, the uh, 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 attacks, you know, the things that the wicked try to do against the righteous. It's, it's kind of like one of those things where they always say, you dig a ditch for, you know, you're gonna dig a ditch for somebody. You might as well dig two. And so I kind of see it in a situation like that. So that, you know, here comes um, um, you know, someone they want to do wicked things. Um, and, and, and normally, when they're doing these wicked things, they, they're, that, they're um, well, they're doing these wicked things. But the um, uh, they also doing wicked things towards the righteous, you know? Um, and, and, and it's kind of a, I kind of see it as a, 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 you know, one of the things Satan driven. When someone is, um, you know, they're righteous and an example of Christ, you know, they showing love to people and things are moving along. Then there's a thing, you know, where it seems as if Satan wants to kick in so that um, to destroy that, you know? And, and, and what we gotta realize is, if we're gonna be a, a wicked one, then he's gonna come along to use us for those situations. And so we have to be very careful. But, but here, you know, it, it's, it's letting us know. Um, or it should give us a um, comfort in knowing that even though those things come, you know, they try to bring those things up against the righteous, they're not gonna stand. You know, when we talk about a ransom, you know, a ransom is kind of like a, 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 you know, it's, it's, it's a a, a payment, if you will. Or it's like a um, uh, you know, uh, yeah, it's kind of like a payment. I give you this. If you want this, I give you this, and you, or you give me this, and I give you this. And so, you know, if the wicked's gonna be the wicked, that becomes a ransom for the righteous. Okay? And anybody want to comment on that? Everybody kind of? Comment on that?
Brother teacher. I think that's where it's difficult. It, it becomes difficult when, when um, you see a situation where the wicked are prevailing over someone. Um, because um, as you mentioned earlier, that our addictions to something um, because of how we um, desire certain things. So it, I, I, I see that as how we interpret things spiritually as well. We might not look at those things spiritually. So we, we're looking at it in our fleshly eyes and saying, this is what we need. But when we look at things spiritually, when we see those things, we, we can see how those addictions can keep us away from God. Um, to, to know that, that message, you know, Pastor even preached that, uh, what was that? There should be no other God before them. Um, and when we see those, we understand when we're in a situation that we're putting that before God, we do that. So on the flip side with this verse, when we see wicked, wickedness happening to people and so on and so forth, we should not be dismayed because spiritually we know that God will fix the situation for those who serve Him. God will use this as a, a learning situation to even the wicked that, that sees that. So we have to, um, cause when, when you talk about a ransom, someone's forced into a situation to be used um, for evil to be, you know, a evil thing to be done. You know, so, so you gotta ransom because someone wants money from you. So y- you're, you're the cause for someone getting, you know, you're being used so someone can get paid. So once we see this thing spiritually, how, you know, those things happens, it might feel like we're in captivity. It might feel like we're, 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 you know, being prevailed over. But God's gonna make that just uh, when his lesson needs to be taught. And it is, and that's where I, I see that we have to continue to look at things spiritually. So we can understand, no matter how it looks, um, it's not gonna be the way that the wicked thinks it should.
And you know, one of the things that um, when I um, was looking at this, that, that I, I went to was the verse that says, the uh, the wealth of the wicked is in store for the righteous. Okay, so you know, even where the wicked, they, you know, it might look like they're prevailing and everything's working out. But you know, um, it's just, it's what, you know, it's just in store for the righteous. So you know, um, uh, um, that's why it's important that, because it's real easy that when, you know, you're trying to do the right thing. And you're trying to, you know, be good to people, you know, love God and live the way he tell you to live. And then it just seems like things just keep happening to you. It seems like when you look over, you know, across the fence and, you know, and they, and, and you see somebody that's just doing whatever they want to do, don't care about anything, don't care about God or anything. And it looks like things just going well with them. But see, um, you know, the scriptures are here to give us encouragement to understand that it might, although it might look good, but what's happening is, you know, um, there's something in store there for me. So I don't need to get discouraged and give up. And say it's not, you know, the, there's no need for me to try to live right. There's no need for me to be good to people. Because it's not getting where, no, this, these scriptures are here to let us know that, you know, we just gotta hold on, you know, a little while longer. And then, you know, and, and the other thing is, we gotta stop thinking in the line of uh, finances. You know, we saying the, 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 the wealth of the wicked in store for the righteous, you know, that don't necessarily mean a, from a financial standpoint. See, because that, when you looking over the fence at, that look like everything is going great, they might not be sleeping at night. You know? Their lights might still be on, you know? While you, you know, what, you, you resting well. Um, you know, o- o- over the fence, when they get at work and things not going well, or you know, the boss not treating them well, but you know, they're, 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 they're having the stress over that because they can't afford leave. Because their trust is in the job to provide the things that they think they need versus having their trust in God to, 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 to provide, you know, for them. So we have to, you know, as we trust God, we have to understand and, 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 and trust that the things that he's got for us and the things he got in store for us, they are there for us. And there's some building, you know? It's like um, it's like if you want to be successful in sports. Okay, if you're um, you know, you're gonna be a, a basketball player, you can't expect not to do some running and be a good basketball player. So and what's happening is, you gotta work out, you gotta run, you gotta, you know, you gotta get your, you build your, your tolerance up for, you know, for a lot of uh, you know, moving, quick moving and, 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 and all that. You can't expect, you know, I'm, I'm gonna sit on the couch and now I'm a um, jump out and play a game of basketball, you know, professional basketball or football. It don't work that way. You gotta build up a tolerance. You gotta build up, you know, your muscles. And that's the thing when it comes, you know, with God. There are some things he have in store for us, but he's trying to build up our faith muscle. So that when they come, we'll understand that this is his blessings. But not only that, we'll understand how it's supposed to be used. And so when we look at this right here, especially the scripture that talks about, you know, whoever love pleasure will become poor. So if God blesses us with whatever it might be, and we hadn't built up our faith, and we hadn't built up our understanding, we might misuse that blessing.
Ah, go ahead now.
And so, you know, um, you, it, it, it take, for example, you know, a lot of times when we see people that won the lottery and all of the money they won, and you know, we find out that they're worse off. You know, and so the instant gratitude, the instant, you know, uh, um, uh, um, you know, things coming just like that. And they don't have a, you know, they haven't built up any muscles or any faith or any tolerance of, okay, I need to be disciplined with this. I need to, you know, understand, and I, and, and, and most importantly, especially if we, we, we um, try to be God's people, is what do God want me to do with this? Okay?
Brother teacher, can I add to that? Um, um, what I'm getting out of Proverbs just reminds me of Joseph and those who they endured so much. They endured so much. But they were in a position to provide for God's people. You know, the the journey that they took didn't, you know, we, if you looked at that, you would see that. They had no favor, or they would not be a factor um in 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 serving God in the way they did. Um, so that that tells me today. Basically, what you're saying that we have to um really trust God. And, you know, not taking that word lightly, but really taking it even more severe, you you really have to trust God. During these times that we're in. Because all of, I mean, just look at the political state we're in, look at the financial state we're in. Just look at where we are, and and this is no different than the Old Testament times, E- Exodus. There's no difference in in those times where, you know, oppression is 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 the seen, felt, heard. And displayed. Um, but we have to trust God that there's going to be. A better solution out of, it's gonna be God's solution out of it. And that's gonna help us endure through this time, so we can be prepared, not just endure, but work while we're there. So when it's time, we're prepared to do what we need to do for God. Um, so we can handle a drought situation, or we can survive these situations where. Um despair is greater than what it feels now. Knowing God to that level helps us get through all trials and tribulations. And and that's, that that no part is real serious.
Okay, let's go.
Uh, yeah, I I kinda look at it like number two tries harder, right? You were, you were talking about wealth. And you're right, it's not just financial. Or or anything, you know, at least any any man with boats, right? We we have to have an understanding that. Having uh good health falls into that picture and and uh. Having uh surrounded by good friends, you know, good Christian friends fall into that picture. And also, uh, as example with a with a basketball, uh. Number two tries harder, right? Number two. Works just as hard as number one, number one's a star, right? But after a while, what does he do? Right, he he gets full of himself, he, oh, I gotta do this interview, I got the, I got this contract, I got this and that. And oh, I'm worth this much, and you guys gotta stay behind me because I'm the big star. You know, he's not gonna be a team player, right? And so. So what is, number two still perseveres, he still does his, you know, he he does it for God. He he plays basketball for God, he he's, he's out there doing it for God. You know, and the other guy will fall by the wayside because he, it falls back into the pleasures, right? Got into pleasures, he made mistakes, he falls to the wayside and. Loses the contract, loses uh all the uh perks and all the. All the uh, you know, the commercials and all that. And the other guy, you know, staying staying firm on on his beliefs and staying firm. And we're being a team player and saying, come on, guys, let's pray, let's do this together, let's share. You know, I'm gonna share the ball with you, what about this guy over here, you know? Give the ball to him, you never know, he could do it, let's let's give him some encouragement, you know, let's show him some love. And so, you know, he mu- he watches the other guy make all those mistakes, right? He's watching and it's like, okay, I'm not doing that. You know, he, they may say, hey, do this contract, do that contract, well, I'm gonna pray about it first. You know, he's gotta, he's gotta follow his spirit, he's gotta follow where his spirit's gonna lead him because. That's the big picture and uh. And and God sees everything, you know, He sees it from uh a perspective that we only see a portion of itself. So I love the way you brought up basketball or or things like that, where you you have to stay in it. But you can also, you know, kinda just be in the background, you're not up in. Where, you know, like like the Bible says, you know. Those that that uh go out publicly, you know, they get the reward, but you you go into your closet, you pray. You pray in secret and the Lord will reward you in secret, and that's that's really the justification. Of uh. Having an open spirit and and uh feeling His love and everything.
Okay, all right, thank you for that, and 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 with what you're saying, you know, it it kinda um. You know, we use those analogies, basketball and 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 as you mentioned about, you know. You can be in the background too. So when we look at, you know, um from a um, you know, from a a a church or from a religious standpoint. You know, when. When, you know, a lot of times in church, the the you're dealing with church, um. Uh you, it it's like, you know, um, someone, you know, you wanna, you know, you have people that wanna stand out. I wanna be the one, I wanna be the one, but, you know, one of the greatest things that you can do. For church is you the one in the closet, in the background praying. You're the one praying for, you know, the to 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 stand in the gap for somebody. You're the one praying for the pastor, praying for, you know, the the elders, praying for the deacons, praying for, you know, the ushers. You're you know, you and 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 nobody have to know it. But you uh you're praying and you're faithful, because, you know, um. Um, what happens is, because you you you're helping to usher in the Holy Spirit in situations. Because, you know, when we're, when 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 um, as we know, Satan don't want God's word to go forth, right? So, you know, he wants to do whatever he can do to disrupt it. So that's why, you know, if, you know, like, as Christians. Um, you know, even if we're not being recognized, even if we're not in front of people. We need to keep our focus, you know, we need to keep uh uh, you know, saying our prayer, praying, praying for situations. That, you know, on on on, uh, you know, you we're really, it's time for church, you know, praying that. Um, God fixed the situation and, you know, the situation, the 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 mood. Uh 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 the environment and that somebody might get convicted. You know, somebody might wanna be saved, or somebody might um realize that, um, you know, I'm I'm missing it. And I need to, you know, repent, that that, you know, that that the word, that that the Holy Spirit. Um, will use the person bringing the word, that the word might come across strong. And so, you know, in that background, nobody really realizes that you're doing it. And we need to be able to be Christians like that, so that we're supporting, but nobody know we're supporting. That we don't, you know, our name don't have to be called out, or 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 um, you know, um. And but we're praying for the service, you know, we're we're praying and and seeing what happens is. We get God in the situation, and we get the Holy Spirit that's staring up, and it's not just staring up around the altar. That it can stare up throughout the whole church, so that everybody can be touched. And then, you know, and and then what happened is conviction should come. And so, you know, uh 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 when we can do that, be, you know, that puts us all on one accord. And when we're all on one accord, then we know Christ is gonna move, and He's gonna move strong. And so, you know, as as we looking at this and we um, these these proverbs, the proverb is teaching us integrity. And, you know, one of the things that um, I think Elder Vince, when he was talking, that 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 come to mind is, you know. You know, we pray and we hear from God and and, you know, and 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 He give us comfort. But the question is, is, you know, uh between the Testaments, it talks about God was silent for four hundred years. And, you know, it it makes you wonder is, if you, if if you're not, if if you know, if if God just gonna be silent. You know, in in your life. Are you still gonna hold on to Him? Are you still gonna, you know, you're gonna keep that integrity? Is, you know, it, we have to get at the point where we, you know, uh, we can get at the point of saying, you know, God, you done enough for me already. That if you don't do anything else, I'm good. You know, but see, we, uh which, you know, puts us at a point where we gotta get out of the thing of thinking. That uh God's gotta always do something for us, you know, He allow us to wake up in the morning. Okay, and He brought us to, you know, this point. And and I understand that God's got promises and God's gonna do, and we we know that. But we can't let our focus always be on, God's gonna do this for me, God's gonna do that for me. We gotta let our focus be is, Lord, I'm satisfied, I can't repay you for what you already done. So I'm satisfied with what you already did, you're doing for me. Okay, and 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 so we have to have that attitude of gratitude. And when we do that, it helps us out that we don't get so caught up in the other pleasures. You know, the other things, it 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 helps us that we could, we should, it should help us that we will stay humble. So we, you know, once we're dealing with people, we'll understand about, you know, like the uh, you know, we realize that. Because God forgave me of all that, uh I've been involved in. Now I can forgive.
What? Don't say that, don't say that.
Because they have not, they have not, and probably cannot. Do worse to me than I've done to God. And so it helps brings about that attitude of gratitude, and then we can forgive people and love people more, okay? And so what we're dealing with these scriptures here is this teaching us that we need to get out of ourselves. And not be so focused on what I want, what I I think I need. Okay?
Amen.
And so, um, let's see, and and and. In verse nineteen, I'm letting Elder Vince have this one, it says, better to live in a desert than with a quarrelsome and nagging wife.
No, you not, no, you not. No, no, well, see, I wouldn't know, I wouldn't know that one. No, but 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 be honest though, um, I'm I'm glad you brought that up because, you know. When when we had our couples um outing, and and we had the um, the pastor would have those sessions. That we will go through and talk about, you know, honestly, talk about situations as a couple. Um, the this proverb piece, um, understanding that helps you confront things. Because when you say quarrelsome and we joke about it, you know, there's things that as a couple. We 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 both do certain things that kinda puts us in a situation where we seen as quarrelsome. And and when we look at 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 those situations, we want to have a strong relationship. But we're also strong about our different beliefs. But when when I see this here, you know, all our acts are contentious, that can be seen contentious. And when we do that, we can never get together to be the powerful couple we supposed to be for God. And 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 sometimes when we look at these verses, it's like, yeah, I can relate to this, so I understand what you're doing. And yeah, you're right, I'd rather be in the wilderness than than deal with that situation again. But we're looking at those things fleshly. But spiritually, when we look at this, we be able to to have conversation to do that. We know sometimes it might not be conversation, we just need to go pray about the situation. So this is where that that um, that spiritual wisdom comes in. And how we deal with situations, but also identify when we're being contentious. And when we're being that, because now we're classified as someone no one wants to be around. And when we, when we talk about that, um, you gotta know when to move away from a situation. Whether you're male or female, whether this is a conversation at work, whether there's a conversation with your kids. If it, you you have to know when you're crossing the line of spiritual teaching. Or a fleshly um ego, of making sure your point is made. And I I really like how this comes up and 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 even the the playfulness that we have as couples to come up with this. This helps us address the situation as serious as it needs to be. Did that work? Did that work?
That worked.
Okay, I won't have to wear shades tomorrow, will I?
No, no. Not, uh uh, no, you're good.
Uh, brother teacher?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know if you can hear me, I've been on the road.
I agree.
So, so.
Yes.
Okay, well, you know, it shows really the importance of peace. In the situation.
Yes.
That uh in any situation that what we need to do, we're we're best suited for peace. And we are our best selves, and there's a peaceful environment. And so, it's like when we have control over whether it's uh, you know, there's someone who is quarrelsome. Or if, you know, our our goal is to act in a way to make sure that that peace is realized. And uh and that's, you know, and and that's in a lot of situations, not just husband and wife. It's, you know, with children or in church or whatever. We we don't need to be, you know, when you're in a quarrelsome situation, we start losing your your thought pattern. You start uh acting and responding and rather than, you know, thinking. Uh, in instead of, you know, thinking forward, you're kinda thinking backwards of what was done or what was said to you. So everything comes to end reverse, uh your blood pressure is going up. Responding emotionally, um, rather than spiritually.
Right.
God always wants us to, you know, to be on solid ground on all of our responses and being responsible for this. So I'm I'm just saying that it's important to kind of, to look at this specifically as it stands, but also generalize. And try to keep, uh, you know, try to keep peace in the home, keep peace in the church home, keep peace within yourself.
Amen.
Amen, amen.
All right, let's go.
Uh, yeah, I think uh, well, the Bible's full of humor, and uh it's one of them. Is uh. Well, if a woman asked a nag, then it's usually it's him not performing his part. Like, take the trash out, well, you know, there's a partnership going on. And uh, so. You know, there's an agreement for me to take the trash out, and that's what I need to do, right? Take the trash out. So she wouldn't have to go to that level if I'm doing my part in the partnership. In the relationship as as a, you know, power couple, you know, getting out there and and uh. Us doing our portion that we make an agreement to do. Or at least discuss on open format, so. But if you're in the desert, right? It it seems good at first, right? You're at, you're in the desert. You know, you have your peace of mind, you're away from everything, but, you know, there's no water, there's no substance, there's no. You know, you you have, you have a need to kinda get back to. Where God put you in the first place and and why. And uh, so it's it's, so you have a purposeful life. And uh, so it's it's, so you have a purposeful life. And and to to do good, good works. So, in my in my estimation, uh, you know. The nagging part, and men can nag too, you know, it's not just women, men can nag. You know, a uh, you know, you know, you should have done this instead of that, you know? So, uh, it's really easier to discuss things in a quiet way. And kinda let the storm pass a little bit, you know, before reacting. But it's it's quick and easy to react, but once you do, it it actually is like putting fuel on a fire. That that necessarily would have went out by itself. And that's how I see it.
Okay, alright, thank you. And so, one one of the things that, you know, when we we studying this, we have to understand. That during the time that this was originally written, that um, uh, prospectus. Um, you know, the 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 uh, women were looked at a little different than what they are today. Um, and so, um, you know, when we see this and it says nagging wife, but you know, it's past. In any situation that we're dealing with, you we want peace of mind, you know, it it's the same thing, we don't wanna go to work. And while we at work, you know, the boss is is nagging a coworker, you we we, you know, we wanna be in peace of mind, so. I'mma put this example out, you know, so so that so that we, to get our minds thinking. And let's not get so caught up in thinking the way we see things today. So when um, remember in the Bible, Abraham and Sarah. Okay, now, there's a situation where God made a promise to Abraham. You know, and Sarah made a comment, you know, she was kinda like, you know, because of her age is how that's gonna happen. And then here's Sarah telling Abraham to take the maid. Okay, so, you know, it's kinda one of the things where when I look at that, I don't think the first conversation. To Abraham convinced him to take the maid. You know, it's kinda like, you know, maybe i- if you know, i- it it was more than one conversation the way I I s-. When I look at it, I think, um, you know, especially with Abraham, um, his his um, faith in God. Um, and so, what happens is, you know, uh, sometimes for that peace of mind. In situations um, that, you know, a spouse will do things just to get a little peace of mind. Um, and so you see what happens is, when we get caught in situations and we do things like that, there's repercussions. And uh, we know the repercussion on Abraham's part, and and you know, it's it's part of the things we're. We're dealing with today, and when we're talking about the Middle East, it's the it's it's the thing that had that everlasting effect. So here i- it this, when we see this, then it's saying, you know, it's better to. And notice it said, uh, live in a desert, so i- i- it's better to go get in uncomfortable situations. Than to have to deal with situations that's bothering you in your mind. It the the, you know, you you, uh, it might be hot, but I can make do. Rather than going home and and steady, you know, hearing this and 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 hearing the same thing over and over. And again, it's not just, you know, when we look at this, it's uh, um, talking about a uh, having a peace of mind. And it not necessarily mean that the wife is nagging, it could be the husband, you know, pastor said, it could be the kids. But it's it's talking about having a peace of mind. Pastor, you have something you want?
Well, I don't, I don't want us to mitigate this for so much that we start making it look like something else. Alright, and because the word says a quarrelsome. Am I, it's, I'm not reading it, cause I just, I I'm I'm uh, listening, what did it say?
Um, it says, uh, 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 verse twenty, it says, no, twenty one, it says, um. No, nineteen, it says, better to live in a desert than with a quarrelsome and nagging wife.
Okay, alright, so that's what the word says. Yeah, the thing was, i- is is not talking about, um, at this particular time. Cause God has made sure that we we, he covers everybody's bases, that kinda thing. Um, but it particularly talks about, um, in this time. It it is talking about a disposition. It's talking about disposition that he doesn't, that it does not work. And the disposition that does not work is being quarrelsome and being nagging. And what, um, the, you know, the, the, um. A a lot of ti- a lot of times in houses and homes, um, be- before we try to mitigate stuff. The 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 wife sets the temp- to the temperature like a thermostat. Um, sets sets the temperature and and you can almost set the temperature of children and everything. The the nurturing part of how a woman sets the house, the nest, that place. Has a whole bunch to do with the temperament of everybody in the place, that's power. That is absolute power, and so folks need to know about and 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 everybody. And and the Bible doesn't, you know, take, um, you know, it'll it'll say the things that it wants to say. Husband loves your wives, and and, you know, and children obey your parents, it'll say specifically. Um, you know, and it says specifically on this book, that, um, oh, oh, that, um. And that a nagging, um, a nagging wife, quarrelsome wife will make it so. That a man would rather be in a dangerous situation in the desert. It that, and 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 that's a bad place to be, that if your home is in such a place, if anybody causes that. But if you have a husband and wife situation, and now, um, that wife is 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 providing an atmosphere. Um, that your husband would rather be in in a a place of drought and tumbleweed and that kinda thing. That that's just probably not the best place to, you know, to start, um, how to make a home.
Amen, okay, anyone else want to add something? Alright, okay, if not, it says, in verse twenty, the wise store up choice food and olive oil. But fools gulp theirs down. Okay, alright, class, anybody wanna start discussion on that? Okay, so, when when, um, when I see this, it says, the wise store up choice food and olive oil. You know, it it goes back to, um, and Elder Vince mentioned a little bit earlier. About when, um, Joseph was on the scene in Egypt and God gave that dream to, um, to Pharaoh. And you know, that Joseph and uh, God used Joseph to interpret about the seven good years and the seven years of famine. So, you know, here we see here, it talks about, if you're gonna be wise, you're gonna store it. And notice it just didn't say, uh, food, it said choice, so you're storing up good, you're storing up good things. And then, and 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 it says in olive oil, and you know, and and, you know, during the time it's supposed to be olive oil. Would be something of value, so you're storing up something that's of value, you're putting valuable things up, and you're storing it up. Okay, but it says, but fools gulp theirs down, so, you know, your 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 resources you have. You know, as a wise person, you're putting something aside. But eh, we see here is foolish, you're using all your resources, you're not planning for. Uh, uh, you know, for the drought season, if you will, you you know, there's there's no, um, uh, uh, things that you're. Gonna prepare for that, you know, uh, times where you might be sick or, um, you know. And and so here we we have that, you know, if you're gonna be wise, you're gonna be storing up. Uh, okay, uh, Brother Scott?
Yeah, like what you said there, um, you know, we talk about storing things, like. You have corn, vegetables, uh, my grandfather was a farmer. Uh, you know, a lot of choice foods, and they're put in storage. And if you, you gulp it up, you, I'm kinda wasted it. But if you maybe take a little bit of corn, like you cut off a little off the corn on the cob. And you cut a little bit of the carrots, and you do this, and you make a soup, and you stretch that. You know, that that's uh, that's wisdom, because you have enough for yourself and the family. And and uh, their family. And that's wisdom, because you're not just thinking of yourself, you're thinking of those around you, your neighbors that might be hungry. And uh, and God's pleased with that, so, you know, you will receive more. When, let's say, when you're in a famine, and they have a good harvest, they're gonna remember your kindness. In the time that, uh, you know, you stepped up to the plate to bless others.
Okay, alright, thank you. Pastor, you have something?
Yeah, well, the thing is, is that, um, you know, this lines up with Proverbs thirty one. Um, you know, being prudent, a lot of the proverbs has to do with being prudent. I appreciate you bringing up, you know, uh, Joshua being very uh, prudent, you see that many times. For, um, you know, uh, during the Bible, and the and the thing is, is that, um. Everybody in the, we're talking about households, and we're talking about organizations, we're talking about more than one person. They they whole proverb is talking about how to get along, you know, how to get along in society, how to get along with people, right? How to build strong organizations and or stronger relationships. And, um, they they, and then this this verse is saying that, you know, we need to be prudent as people. And some folks are living like day to day, you know, like, I don't care, I'm gonna use up everything. And they they, you know, they kinda misinterpret what the, you know, what the Bible says sometimes. So, that, you know, you don't, you know, uh, when he he sent the disciples out. And he told them, you know, when, don't, don't take anything with them, they they weren't training. And they they needed to learn to lean on, you know, what he had taught them. But they also, you know, in the latter days, they had a treasury, so they 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 didn't go out broke all the time, they had a treasury. You know, so, um, you have to balance that, and so we have to teach our young folk. And ourselves at a very, you know, young age to be be prudent, don't eat everything, um. Keep something in the cupboard, uh, don't spend everything because you have it in your hand. And that the things that we have, that, you know, the Lord has blessed with are not dis- not disposable. Um, a lot of times, you know, I I, and these, you know, like some of the boy scouts I have, man, they. You know, you said like three bicycles in the yard, and you know, they had, um, uh. Uh, you know, golf carts and stuff or whatever, and, you know, two or three. Uh, just toys or those things in the yard, and none of them working. Uh, because everything was disposable. And when I remember, we take two bicycles or three bicycles and make one, cause we use a scrap and the old stuff. Uh, you know, because we we had to, we we knew what wrenches were, we knew what repair was. We knew how to change filters on things, we knew how to keep things going. But now we have a new disposable economy, you know, where people are like, okay, that's good, I use that, but, you know. Put it outside the road, let's go get a new one, and, um, okay, so if you do that, now you can't tie it. There's no, no ties and no gifted, it it affects the rest of your life. Right, so, um, and and so, uh, you know, um. There have been certain things that we've been given, that, you know, that the master will come back to see if we have leveraged them. Into the right things, right? And so that that's the deal, we, if we be, if we're gluttonous, uh, we, you know, we go to. And we gotta eat everything on the buffet because it's there. Our health is not gonna be good, and and I've seen people go in and not, uh, eat the stuff, but leave the stuff on the plate. Or, you know, go get a piece of chicken, take a bite off of it, letting the kids do that stuff. In a buffet, and everybody like, well, you paid for it, we know everybody's paying for that. Eventually, that's why chicken wings and turkey wings cost so much now, is because of buffets. You know, that's what I'm thinking, is that folks get something, and then on these, you know, buffets and stuff. And, you know, folks are stacking stuff like you, like you can't go back, or like you're never gonna eat again. And when you have that, that's when you have, you know, buffet costs thirty six dollars, but not that long ago, they were ten dollars. And it and it, like, well, what does it matter? Okay, so we'll see what it matters now. And then see what it'll matter, you know, during a recession and that kinda thing. So the Bible is, you know, it it talks about, um, you know, um. Teaches us how to work as a community, how to work as a couple, you know, couples need to be, you know, doing these type things. Keeping your receipts and keeping your budgets and those kinds of things, cause. Eh, well, what my grandmother used to say, or my daddy, or my grandfather too, said money don't grow on trees. And people, you don't even hear that anymore. But but they used to say that, um, you know, um, and so. That's, eh eh, I I, you know, you can watch kids today, and and grownups and stuff, and have a a get together. And you see, you know, folks are going and drinking a half a soda out of a can and stuff, and then they go get another one. Eh, you know, and that kinda thing, and i- i- and it's just a mindset. Um, that we gotta, as Christians, we we gotta stop that mindset. Um, and start learning ways not want not, or or learning exactly what the word is saying. Is that, don't, you know, don't, don't be a glutton, and don't disregard all the gifts that, you know, that God has given.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, that is good. So, Mister, uh, Brother Teacher.
Yes.
I I can, um, relate to what the pastor just said, because when we grew up. You 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 just couldn't throw away food, you had to, whatever you put on the plate, you had to eat it all. My father said, you you know, if you you put it up, or you could pile it up, pile the roof of the, to the top of the house. But everything on that plate had to be ate, because he said, if you didn't want it, why did you put it on the plate? He'll make you eat it all if you had to go outside and throw it up, but you gonna eat it. And nowadays, like the pastor was saying, you go into in the place where all you can eat, and people will get a little bit of this, and a little bit of that. And then they take two bites, then go get some more, and it's just a waste, like you say, about the money, you know, about saving. And 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 doing different thing with your money, because I I, we got to stop and think about what's going on around us now. With 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 finances and what's happening, and say, get things together, put, you know, put. Yourself in a situation where, where, and look at the people that's, that I feed on Tuesdays and Thursdays, their homelessness, and I feel so bad for them. But a lot of them really is not, it's it's like they, they're not appreciative, you know, I don't want that. My God, with with you, you know, we tried to, we tried to let them understand that, you, we're here to. To feed you, and you, uh, you're really telling us what to do, and you're on the other side of the. The the table, and we give you a plate of food, and, well, I don't want that, well, we say, whatever you want, tell us, we're gonna give it to you. Then you'll see them go back by the door and throw it all in the garbage. I mean, they regular, we sit right there and watch them, they'll get a couple of boiled egg, they'll get some piece of chicken, they'll get a baker. A piece of sausage when breakfast time comes, and they'll they'll take two bites off of it, and throw it out in the garbage. And I sit there and look, and I just say, now, why in the world you get that? And you didn't want it, you threw it away, I mean, you.
Okay, yeah, alright. Okay, yeah, alright.
And the way, the way it's going on today now is, we should really be careful. And we should really put ourself in a situation back when it was, when like we had to grow everything, and you know what I'm saying? You, you, eh, eh, everything had to be, you had to, had to go in the field and hoe up the grass so it can grow, so it can eat. And we was happy for that, now people don't care whether they had thrown it in the trash, they, they get rid of it, not, you know. I'm thinking about the way I was brought up and how I messed up.
Right.
Me, because that, that's what, that's what happened to me after I got older, I just felt the same way, I don't need that. I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm confessing myself with these other people, cause that's the way I was, same way. But I thank God that he delivered me and let me know, and teaching me a better way to save. For a mindset, like the pastor say, we got to have a mindset of what, what's going on around us and in our head. For other people you, that need help. You know, cause a lot of people don't know how to budget, they don't know how to do it, because they weren't taught that way. You gotta be taught, anything you learn, somebody gotta teach. Like you teach your kids what to do and how to do this and, and, and the same, but you got to let them know what is going on. In the situation, but I, I just want to add what, what the pastor said about, I, I'm the same way, I look and see people just waste food and, and throw it away, but. Oh, I, but I, 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 let me share that, cause I'm, I'm getting pointed, and I'm talking too much, so I'm done.
Um, that, that, and that's, and that's true, that's so true, um, you know, um, we, um. And, 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 you know, I guess it's just that, things is, is like it's moving so fast. You know, that, that um, uh, that today, you know, um. Is, it's just like there's a, an abundance of things if, uh, as you're saying about uh, giving out food. You know, if you don't have no food, there are places you can go because, you know, one of the things that I've noticed, you know, that I hit, but not at the food bank. Um, is that, uh, you know, someone might come to the food bank, but they just came from another food bank. And so, you know, and, and the choices are so great that it's like, you know, uh, I don't want that. And, and there's another choice versus, um, you know, it, it, eh, eh, and, and, and. It's kind of, you know, it, it kinda gets us in a bad situation. Because if a situation come along where there is actually a real, you know, a drought where there is nothing, you know. We haven't built up any, uh, you know, like endurance, the, the saying, okay, you know, um. I don't, you know, to get over the part of saying, I don't want this, and realize that, you know, I gotta have this. And so, um, uh, you know, it's just kinda like things are flowing too great, too fast, too, too good. Um, that, you know, eh, eh, that, that we wouldn't survive in another great depression, you know? And so, you know, we, we have to kinda have that mindset of saying, uh, you know, um. One day, things are not gonna be as plentiful.
That's right.
And if it's not for us, then you know, i- i- it's, it's kinda like during the COVID time. You know, one of the things, um, uh, like I, I have, uh, you know, older neighbors. And you know, the kind of the mindset or, or the conversation we had was, you know, um, as long as I eat, you'll eat. And so, you know, it's, it's kinda, we, we need to keep ourselves in position. That, you know, not only can we help ourselves, but we can help, you know, can help our neighbors.
Amen.
Okay, alright, I thank everybody tonight, um, we're, I'm gonna get prepared to close on tonight. Uh, Elder Vance, you still on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, um, I'mma call on you for the prayer, uh, for tonight, um. And I, I wanna go ahead and put, um, um, Vicky, sister Vicky and brother Wadiel. I'm gonna put them in, um, and their family.
Amen.
I'm into that. Alright, thank you, um, brother teacher. Um, you guys heard the, the start for the call for petitions to share? Does anyone else have someone they'd like to put in the prayer circle?
Um, I'd like to put Pastor Vanessa in, and really all of our pastoral staff, Pastor Do, um, my dad. And leadership all over.
Amen, thank you for that. Have any others to add?
Um, pray, praying for, um, my sister-in-law and brother, they're going through a lot with, um. Uh, my sister-in-law's dad and mom, they've called hospice in, so. But, but over that situation, it's really hard for their mom right now. That, and you know, the leadership and. You know, my family, I want everybody in my family.
Amen, thank you.
I would like to put in Tia Campbell and her family in prayer, and my Aunt Mabel Singleton for healing. And Patea for healing.
Any, anyone else, any other petitions?
Uh, praying for, uh, soft hearts, wisdom for the church body, and strength for our disciples.
Thank you, thank you, brother. Uh, I like to, um, put the bereaved families in all over. Um, also, um, our nation for, um, compassion. And, um. And, and more godliness for decisions that are made. Also, I have some coworkers who are, uh, dealing with some health issues. And we're asking for healing, complete healing, um, only, the only one that God can give. Um, have a couple of family members who, um, are, are, are enduring a. Uh, some professional challenges, so I'm asking, um, for God to, um, give them wisdom. But also favor in their situation. Um, and as, uh, the whole church family, like to put in the circle for our ministry growth. Um, but also our, um, to enact our wisdom to, um. Share with others and encourage others to, uh, stay in the word. Um, and, and connect with one another for outreach, uh, purposes. Um, also, um, like to bless, uh, the area where our church is in. That, uh, those who, who see us, uh, who are moving into the area with the new homes. Uh, know there's a church home available for them, um, I really wanna speak that into existence.
Um, I wanna put my, um, classmate Cynthia in for healing. And I want to put my cousin, um, Maisie in the circle, um, in the loss of her husband.
Um, I would like to put, uh, my brother in a cer- in the circle as he looks for employment. And then everyone that is, um, currently unemployed or looking for employment. Especially those that are being laid off, given the, to the government currently.
Yes.
Um, I would like to request prayer for, um, a dear friend of mine. Her sister lost her son, um, twenty-seven years old in a car accident this past weekend. So praying for that family, um, the Gore family, um, also wanna put my brother in prayer for healing. Um, having some challenges with his heart, so just gonna pray for, for healing for him. Um, and then just for our family, um, pastors on the road a lot, so just continue prayers for him. Um, and, and just for our family in general, and for our church family. And, um, as Elder Vance mentioned, just for the spirit of outreach that we are prepared to receive. Um, what God is doing in our community, in our church community.
Amen. Like to put, uh, that, uh, families in that church that destroyed on Sunday morning. All the people that, this young man just started shooting in the church, burned the church out. And now they say they found some more body, and they're still searching, so let's keep the one that's made it out in prayer for their families.
I'd like to pray for my, my, my friend Alicia, she's going through, um, health challenges right now. And she's a single mom of, um, three kids.
Is that all we have? Uh, let us pray. Um, dear heavenly Father, we, we come to you tonight, Lord, uh, first of all, we say thank you. Thank you for a, a wonderful, uh, moment of teaching, uh, of collaboration on your word, God. Uh, so we can be shored up in, in all the ways that we need to for you. And understanding that this very moment that we're in prayer, uh, is an act of conversation with you. So Lord, we thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come in and share names. Uh, bring to, um, our lips what our hearts were saying. And even know that you knew these before we even thought these to be said. We thank you for allowing us, uh, to walk through our, our purpose. So Lord, we asking that, uh, the prayers that were out tonight. Uh, especially those for our spiritual leaders and their guidance during the, these times that we're in. Uh, we're asking, um, you to do what you do best, God, is love. Provide, protect, uplift, strengthen, correct. All of those things, Lord, that, uh, we praise you for, Lord, we're asking for that in here. And we know in confidence that, uh, you're the only one who can do this, uh, to the point where completeness cannot be questioned. So Lord, as we question our ways and our walk, we ask that you, uh, sure us up every step that we make. So that, uh, when we come to these sessions, Lord, we can still share those names with, um. Without trying to take those names back with us. Uh, and understanding and having the faith that you are the God who will deliver and can deliver. All the things that we need, uh, help our hearts and our minds realize that. Even tonight, as we speak those thoughts and, and bring those to you, God. So Lord, w- with those that were asked, Lord, I ask that you, again, bless those who are on the call, who, who thought it not robbery. To come out and sharing the word tonight, Lord, and be consistent in, in gaining, gaining understanding. So we can be closer to you, to serve those who need to be, uh, who needs to see your spirit. And, and that might be only in our encounter of them, God. So we ask that you, 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 you activate the spirit in us that awakens their ears to hear you, God. Awaken their eyes to see you, your presence. Awaken their spirit to understand that they're amongst those who, who follow you, God. We ask that you move in a mighty way, um, so we can be a part of your service. And if we're not, please let us remember that even if we didn't see it, Lord, you've done it already. We thank you for that confidence, we thank you for the knowledge that we're gaining. But Lord, we need you to, to sure us up so our spirits can never have a question about how we're supposed to move for you. And as these words and names were spoken tonight, those who need your compassion because of their loss. Those who need your healing because of the, the things that they're going through, God. Those who need your protection for, for walking in your way, God. Those who need uplifting because the time that we're in right now, um, evil might seem to be prevailing. Those who need guidance in, 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 in financial, uh, stability, Lord, to know where their riches truly come from. And that we need not to worry about a thing because the path has been laid for us as we continue to walk in your way, God. Just as, as Joseph did, he walked through that to prepare, uh, for a time that you were gonna use him, God. So now the wisdom will be with us so we can serve in the way we should, whether it be a word that we give to somebody. Whether it's a hug, or just a presence that we give, a silent presence that brings your spirit to the room. Lord, please guide us, please keep us, please hold us, and please correct us when we need it, God. So therefore, we truly can be seen as your children in the midst of this world. That, uh, that wants to ignore you at times. Lord, please, take our, our, our petitions to, uh, to your ears, God. Let us see and know that, um, what we do, um, is just to glorify you. And give us a, a, a sign, Lord, that, um, we know that the way that we're moving is the correct way. But if we need to be corrected, uh, please show us that as well. With this, Lord, we trust in you, we believe in you, we love you, and we uphold you tonight, God. That we can be stronger when we open our eyes and move about the day tomorrow. Lord, please keep us and guide us for evermore, we love you, in Jesus' name, we say amen.
Wow.
Ooh, thank you, God, thank you.
Amen.
Amen. Amen. Well, thank you guys for joining tonight, thank you, brother teacher, for such a lesson tonight.
And please, please keep sister Vicky, um, and their family, uh, brother Wadiel in prayer as they lay their daughter to rest tomorrow.
Amen, amen. And, and pastor, please be safe in your travels, and we're praying for you for, uh, the things you have to do tomorrow as well.
Is the funeral at the church tomorrow? Hello?
They said, they said Kingston Lake building.
Yes. You said Kingston Lake, yes, at two o'clock.
At Lewis?
Yes. Alright, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, guys, have a blessed night.
Thank you, Buns, thank you, Chris.